For the TV. Please note this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which should be used to ensure an accurate recording of the proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in an open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing the service live on Comcast slash Exfining Government Act of Channel Nine. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. So, good evening. My name is Frederick Caspin. I'm the chairman of the ZBA. Let's ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Louis Karpner.
Chris McGrath.
And Town Council Amy Questle's here as well. So we are on case number six S twenty-four, the Comp Permit Forty-B Affordable Housing Project on the applicant of Dean Harrison, which was continued to today. Public comment's been closed, and we're now here to discuss, vote, and then potentially go over a decision and waivers. Okay, Amy, where do we stand at this point?
So I've provided you with a draft decision, and the... Do you want me to run through it quickly?
Yeah, if that makes sense, if you don't mind.
So this draft decision is a decision with... It's an approval with conditions, and so there are the findings of the board, which essentially goes through the... Just goes... Summarizes the application and the final plans. There is a waiver list, which we'll do next, but with regards to the findings, there's findings that the town has not reached ten percent yet. We then list the plans, the most recent plans. On page four, we go through the regulatory compliance, which is the state, and state, federal, and local. There's... I did have one question on there. Is it a wastewater treatment or septic? And it's... It is a septic.
Mm-hmm.
So that's resolved. The dwelling units, the... They have to have twenty-five percent of the units have to be affordable, and we are requiring that those are going to be affordable in perpetuity. And then we have a bunch of conditions regarding the affordability and how to keep that affordability. That's on page five. On page six, the... There's management and maintenance plans that are required, and those are going to be required prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued. So that has to do with the maintenance plan of the property, trash recycling, landscape replacement of trees that die, snow storage. And then... And then we have the project design, which starts on page seven. And I guess this would be... This would be a question for your peer reviewer, for Deb, about the four-way stop. And so I'm on... I don't know if you had... Do you have the draft decision? I'm on twenty-six about...
Yeah.
So can I make that a condition? Vehicles exiting the project site shall be placed under stop sign control with marked stop line.
Deb, can you just come up to the mic, just so they can capture it?
So... So this is... They have to... This is... They have to stop when they're leaving the...
At the driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
And then what should I do about the four-way stop?
At the intersection?
Yeah.
I believe that's being done through DPW.
Okay.
So I don't know...
So it wouldn't be part of this?
I wouldn't be part of this.
Okay.
But the driveway can definitely be part of this.
Okay. So I don't have the four-way stop as part of this?
Right.
Just because that's something that the DPW is working with Mass D O T on.
Okay.
Just a question with the verbiage. Vehicles exiting the project site driveway shall be placed under stop sign control. Does that mean like octagon sign? Because then it also says with a marked stop line. Is it one or the other, or is it the sign as well?
Should be both.
Okay.
You should have a stop bar and a stop sign.
Okay, cool. I like that.
Yeah.
It's just sometimes people go, oh, there's this and not that, and both, you know?
Okay.
And then the... They have to keep the site lines, the site triangle and everything. They have to keep that free and clear, so they cannot restrict the lines of sight. Same with snow windrows. They have to keep... Make sure that they can't pile up the snow. They have to do a transportation demand management measures. That's required for fortyBs, which is essentially just a welcome packet when people start renting, that they know where public transportation is, even though there's not a lot. It's a requirement under their P E L usually. And then, again, so under... On thirty-two, there's... This was a recommendation that the applicant shall coordinate with the Pembroke School Department to establish a bus stop waiting location to be demarcated by a four-foot sidewalk. So that's... That's something that they'll work with the school department on. The landscape benches, that's... Those are shown. And then screened plantings shall be provided. And then I actually added a different subheading further on in the decision about screening, which I could actually put here. So I'll probably move that condition regarding fifty-eight Plain Street to this section, but we'll get to that. So the parking, I have to... The parking, I have to add the... We got comment from Merrill on the parking, which is that the parking... The parking count, they have enough... They do have enough parking, and they reduce the width of the spaces from ten feet to nine feet. So I'm going to put that in there. I'll put a condition regarding the... That the parking spaces will go from ten feet to nine feet. Traffic mitigation, that's duplicative, so that's going to be deleted because of the DPW getting the four-way stop. The profitability on the project, they are required. They're limited to twenty percent profitability pursuant to the regulations. They have to work with the town on affirmative fair housing marketing plan and tenant selection plan that they submit to EO H L C and copy the town on. And then there are conditions that are required prior to the commencement of the project. They have to update their final site plans, because as you know, with fortyB, they're only required to give us conceptual plans. So prior to any work starting, they have to give us plans that designate the snow storage, the bus stop area. These are all things they have to work. And then all the building setbacks dimensions with the zoning table and waiver requests. On the final site plans, they have to have erosion and sediment control. They have to have the infiltration basins and confirm the existing conditions as it relates to the emergency spillway and spot grades. Those were a recommendation from Merrill. And then they're going to submit a final review, which will go to the building department, and then the final... The final plans will be submitted to peer review. And again, that peer review will be funded by the applicant. That will also have final detailed landscaping plans. It has to have the operations and maintenance plan, and then it has to have a construction schedule that's required. And that construction schedule has to have staking of the driveways, sediment erosion controls, what trees are being cut, what trees are being, you know, what trees are remaining, the drainage systems, major stages of the roadway construction. I mean, here, it's not necessarily really a roadway. It's more of an internal drive. And then, again, it's the building... It's the building department that really is responsible for all of this oversight with regard to the construction oversight. So that's why we have third-party reviews, because, you know, a building... When a building, you know, technically, a building permit application comes in, they only have thirty days to review it. So here, we have a peer... We have a peer review built into this, so they don't have to worry about that. And they have their... Which is funded by the applicant for the peer review and the third-party inspections. There... That, again, they have to submit stormwater operations and maintenance plan, again, which the peer review has to review and approve. And they also have to review and approve any of the erosion control plan and staging, things such as, you know, equipment staging, vegetative clearing. All of those... All of those things have to be approved. And then a regulatory agreement has to be submitted that has to be approved by EO H L C. It has to be executed by the applicant and the subsidizing agency, which, again, provides that eighty percent... Or that twenty-five percent of the units are restricted to eighty percent A M I. They have to provide a monitoring agent for the project. They have to provide that... That regulatory agreement will require that the profitability remain at twenty percent or lower, and that any excess profits will be turned over to the town. That monitoring, the... That afforded... That regulatory agreement will also require a monitoring agreement, which, again, just monitors the affordability of the project. Again, the final plans have to be... Have to be approved by the fire department. There's another provision for stormwater. Let's see. And the snow management plan. And then prior to the application for the building permit, again, they have to have final approval from EO H L C, which is the state agency. They have to have the regulatory agreement recorded at the registry of deeds. They have to identify a project manager, a project superintendent, give all the names, things like that. They have to provide a surety to the town and a performance guarantee to the town. And the landscaping has to be installed and completed within two years of the issuance of the building permit. They also have to maintain the landscaping, so any dead trees have to be, you know, have to be replaced when... I mean, obviously, they're not going to replace trees in January, so that's...
Right.
That is seasonal. And then they have to have a pre-construction meeting, and then during construction, there's no activity... No construction shall commence Monday through Friday before seven a.m., Saturday before nine a.m., and they have to cease at seven p.m. on all days. There's no construction on Sunday or federal holidays. So we've learned to define what construction activity shall include. It shall include startup of equipment or machinery, demolition, removal of trees, grubbing, clearing, grading, filling, excavating, import or export of earth materials, installation of utilities, and removal of stumps and debris. So, for example, interior painting would not really be considered under... Wouldn't be... Have to fall in those timelines, those time periods. They have to have a utilities plan that has to be submitted to the building department. All debris has to be removed from the project site. No debris can be buried at the project site. They have to provide a working project site. If any activity ceases longer than thirty days, they have to notify the building commissioner of the building department before resuming work. And then they also have to make the site safe if they're not doing work. Again, on their landscaping plan, there can be no invasive plants. They have to keep the site and adjoining existing roadway areas clean during construction. No construction or parking on Plain Street or Lake Street. And then any damage to public roads incurred during construction shall be repaired or replaced by the applicant. No C O can be issued without all of the improvements being completed and all of utilities being adequately serving the property. And so they have to send a... Prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, they have to have their project engineer and architect certify that the buildings are properly serviced by utilities and related improvements. They... They have to submit as-built plans, and temporary certificates of occupancy can only be issued in conformance with the state building code. Let me see. There's a provision here that all of the roadways and sidewalks have to meet the subdivision rules and regulations of the town. And then water and sewer, the... These provisions... These conditions are... The first three are standard conditions that we put in all of them, that the water use has to be sub-metered and billing, things like that. And then the last four that were added were added by the... By the recommendation from the water department. They need to apply for a water availability permit, which, again, is subject to peer review and third-party inspections. They have to require to show an as-built plan. They have to show two distinct ties from permanent objects to each gate valve, curb box, and tee connection. All water mains must be disinfected and pressure tested, and unless specifically waived, there shall be clear compliance with all water department rules and regulations. The residential buildings shall be constructed to allow for rooftop installation of solar. They don't... They don't... They're not providing... Or they're not proposing them. The project lighting shall be energy efficient. All lighting shall be connected to a timer. All exterior shall be shielded to have a cutoff below ninety degrees. There's no uplighting, and they have to... They have to submit a lighting plan... Or I'm sorry, they have to submit the cut sheets for the exterior lighting fixtures. And then this is the condition regarding the screening and landscaping. The abutter at fifty-eight had requested a fence and vegetation, so I drafted a... And I thought that was reasonable. I thought the board also thought that that was reasonable, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. So I have a condition that says that the applicant shall construct fencing along the property line with fifty-eight Plain Street to properly screen fifty-eight Plain Street from the proposed project. Further, the applicant shall work... Oh, I'm sorry. That says applicant. It should say abutter. Shall work with the abutter to provide additional screening in the form of vegetation along the required fencing.
Was it fifty-eight or fifty-two?
Oh, I thought it was fifty.
I'm not sure. This could be wrong.
So it says... It says, "My husband and I propose an eight-foot fence to be put up between the Plain Street project property and ours, comma, fifty-eight Plain Street."
Okay.
Probably make sure that that's right.
Oh, we can...
That is right. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
So I actually would also put... Do we want to add eight-foot fencing in the condition? I wanted to... I wanted to leave it so that the abutter and the applicant could work together and... Or the applicant could satisfy what the abutter wanted without pigeonholing them. But she does state in her letter that she would like eight-foot... An eight-foot fence.
You could say at least an eight-foot fence.
Shall... What if I... Shall construct fencing proposed to be eight foot... Eight feet high?
Yeah.
And then it's not? Okay. Maybe. Okay.
Whatever the homeowner wants. The homeowner wants...
Right.
Three foot, four foot, seven foot, whatever they want.
Right. So we'll just put proposed.
No greater than eight.
Yep. They can't for the building... The building code.
No, I don't.
Yeah, so... So they... Yeah. So, yeah. Proposed to be eight feet high, I think is good.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, again, the bus stop is a set... That's a... Actually, I would delete that. That's one oh-one is duplicative. It's, again, the bus stop that they have to work out with the school department. And then the following aspects of the project shall remain private, and the town of Pembroke shall not have any legal or financial responsibility for the operation or maintenance of roadways, driveways, parking areas, stormwater maintenance, snow plowing, landscaping, trash disposal, recycling, or pickup, street lighting or other illumination, and maintenance requirements of easements, access, and appurtenance associated with any of the above. On F, I think I'm going to change instead of street lighting to internal lighting, since it's not necessarily a street. And then the rest are the administrative conditions, which are they have to pay the fees for the consultant when they're responsible for those fees. They have to... When they submit a cost certification to EO H L C or the subsidizing agency, they have to provide copies to the board. They are responsible for all of the project, including utilities and services. If construction has not begun within three years, then this is... This permit shall lapse. Construction once commenced shall progress through to completion as continuously and expeditiously as possible. And they have to file... They have to comply with all final approval requirements as determined by EO H L C or their subsidizing agency. If they're in violation of any of the affordable restriction, the board can... Has enforcement rights, and the applicant has to provide anything they provide to EO H L C or their subsidizing agency, they have to copy to the town. With regard to the regulatory agreement, they have to provide a separate regulatory agreement with the town to ensure the affordability in perpetuity. And the fees, again, with the fees for the engineering and the third-party reviews, they have to provide an advance deposit of ten thousand dollars, and then they will pay... Once that goes below... Is reduced below two thousand, they have to replenish it with an amount... With an increase of two thousand dollars. And that's so in... If there's a need for a third-party review, the money is in the account. This is an account under Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G, and so it's a special account, and any money not used is returned to the applicant. So it's a drawdown account. So that is... That is the decision. Those are the conditions of the decision. And then I don't know, other than if Deb has... If we... If I missed anything? No. Okay. And we'll add the thing about the... We'll add the parking. So then there are your... The request for waivers. The waivers that they are... The waivers that they are looking for... They're looking for... So what they did was they put them in... They put them in sections, which is... The first is the zoning board of appeals. You have rules and regulations, and you have... It says they'll comply with applicable fortyB rules, except for the ones that they're requesting to be waived, and all local approvals for this project. So the first one is the applicable bylaw is Section four of your zoning bylaw, which is use and dimensional regulations. This is in a Residence District A, which allows for detached one-family use, and they're seeking a waiver to allow for multifamily... More than... Well, more than one-family house on the lot. For the dimensional regulations, they're looking for the front yards. Both frontages of the corner lots are to be considered to be front yards and must meet front yard requirements. So they're... Because they're on a corner, they would have two front yard setbacks. And then to allow for... To allow for this comprehensive permit, they're seeking a waiver from the front yard setback. They are... They do note that the existing building is pre-existing nonconforming with regard to setbacks, and it is. It shows it on the plan. And the new... The new structures are actually going to be compliant with regard to setbacks. But because the existing house is now... Has been rolled into this project, they're seeking a waiver from the setbacks for that structure. I think it's belt and suspenders, but I think it should be in there, in here, so. For the general bylaws, they're looking for stormwater management. So the Pembroke Board of Commissioners of the Department of Public Works generally administers and enforces this section. And then they're seeking waivers from the stormwater... The stormwater bylaw to construct the project, and then they're seeking... Which I... I'm just noticing now, the stormwater... They're saying to allow the waivers set forth herein and to allow construction of the development. So I don't recall seeing stormwater... Specific stormwater waivers. Unfortunately, the hearing is closed. Maybe it'll come... So anyway, then they're looking for the rest... The rest of the waivers are from subdivision of land. So the proposed development does not involve a subdivision. However, to the extent such regulations are... Or any part thereof are deemed applicable, they're seeking waivers from the regulations. So these are the subdivision rules and regulations that the planning board implements. Sections A and B, A through F, A through P, for design standards, for required improvements, administration, and the appendix, they're seeking waivers from... Again, in my... That is belt and suspenders, again, because I don't... They are not creating a subdivision here.
Right.
So I don't think that those waivers are necessary. So the... What they have for the dimensions, the minimum lot size that's required is forty thousand. They have sixty-one thousand. The minimum lot frontage is a hundred and fifty. They have three hundred and fifty-five point eight. So the front yard on Lake Street is a forty-foot requirement, and they have pre-existing seven point nine feet, and Plain Street frontage is forty, and they have pre-existing thirty-three. The rear yard is twenty-five. They have the required... I'm sorry. The required is twenty-five. They have forty. And then the required for Plain Street is twenty-five, and they have twenty point eight. So they... So actually, their first statement is not true. They do need a waiver. The current... They do need a rear... A waiver from the rear... The rear yard. And then... So those are the two waivers from Section four, one D, which is the front... The front setback, the two front setbacks, and the one rear setback are the dimensional waivers that you need to vote on.
Okay.
So you need to vote on those two dimensional waivers and the use waiver, which allows for multifamily when only single-family residential is allowed. I've on the...
Okay. All right. You guys have any questions? Comments? No?
So we go back to the decision. So I guess first, under conclusion, I would add... I'll add a finding. Once you vote on the waivers, I'll add a finding regarding the vote on the waivers. So the vote on the waivers would be... Would be to allow for... It would be a motion to allow for a waiver from Section four, use and dimension... Use and dimensional regulations, Sections... Section four, one, A, to allow for multifamily in the Residence District A, and to allow for a waiver from Section four, one, D, which would allow for a front setback to be seven point nine and thirty-three, and a rear setback to be twenty point eight.
Is this one all thirty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Do you guys have any other questions?
General question.
Okay.
I noticed some inconsistencies and some incorrect information in the conditions. Normally, I can't provide any new information. I have in the past some privacy needs in this situation. I have in this situation and others where I am allowed to make comments about the conditions. We just received the updated one today. So, and there are just some inconsistencies with 40B.
So if those, the only, the only thing I changed, I made four, five changes today. This decision was submitted in April, the exact same, before the hearing was closed.
My understanding, we would have a chance to talk about the conditions while in public. We still had a chance to talk about the conditions.
But the hearing was closed, you were here when the hearing was closed.
I understand.
It was closed.
And I'm just asking for the procedure, if this is how you will proceed tonight, that's fine.
Yeah.
We'll make some comments after, and if you want to take into consideration, if not, it doesn't leave us much room to obviously make sure we understand what the Congress is trying to accomplish by some of these, and that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
But you had this before the last hearing, before we closed. You had this decision.
Understood.
Okay.
And also said, as I said, that in previous hearings that I had with others on the Board of Appeals, this is a time that you can have discussions about the conditions.
Not once the hearing is closed, unfortunately.
That's incorrect.
That is not incorrect, that's the open meeting law, that's, it's a public hearing.
Yep, so we're closed, so, okay. So I guess formally we need to
Vote on the waivers first. Do you want me to say it again, and somebody can say so moved, would that be easier?
Yeah, I think that's, do you guys have any other discussion, or you guys?
No.
So the motion
So we'll vote on the waivers.
Yeah.
So the motion would be to grant the waiver from Section 41A, which allows for multifamily use in the Residence District A, and a waiver from Section 41D, which allows for front setbacks to be 7.9 and 33 feet, and the rear yard setback, the Plain Street rear yard setback to be 20.8.
So moved. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay.
So I just wanted to bring up one quick, I think they need one more waiver, and it goes to the parking. We did get the traffic engineer's input to say that this type of multifamily development, they do have adequate parking, but it still doesn't meet the zoning requirement of two parking spaces per unit, which would be 21 units, so 42. They are proposing 36, four of those would be future if needed, so they have 32 for the 20 units, and then they have four for the single family, and then there are four additional. So, did I do that right?
Can you say that again?
So there's 32 spaces provided with the three new buildings, which is 20 units. There are four spaces, existing spaces with the existing dwelling, and they're showing on the traffic, our parking plan that was provided, four future parking spaces that they could construct, that would take up some of the open space area next to the single-family house, if needed. So that would give them the total, so the question is, do they need a waiver, because that would be 32?
I only have 40.
That would be 40.
And they need 42.
42, so yes, they would need a waiver.
Okay. And so a third, the third waiver would be parking, it would be from zoning bylaw, Section 4A, 1A, is that right?
I believe that is
That's what you put in here, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
To reduce the parking from, okay, to reduce the parking from 42 to 40, with 32 spots for the new buildings, four for the existing single-family house, and four reserved spots.
Okay, so moved. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
No discussion.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Okay. All's in favor, Frederick Kastman and I?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Amy, so the waivers are approved.
And then the comprehensive permit, there's a motion to grant the comprehensive permit with conditions as discussed.
So moved. Any discussion on the decision, the permit?
I don't think so, I think she, I think everybody's kind of into the conditions very well.
Yeah, it was an extensive list, I think it covers everything.
I think there's about 115 conditions.
Right. And you know what happens if we don't put conditions on it. Any other discussion, comments? No? You got a second?
Second.
Okay, all's in favor? Aye. You got that?
That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So
You got everything you need?
Yeah, okay, I will, I will make changes. I have to, I have to work this season on a few things.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody.
Can't roll, I'm just gonna do one.
Yeah. Thanks, Amy.
Do you have another hearing?
Yeah.
I'll call, I'll talk to Susan.
Okay. Okay. Just wait for Kristen. I don't know if I drink a lot. All right, we're gonna go on to the next meeting. Notice is hereby given that Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Sorry, we're gonna start the next meeting, so if everyone could just, um, May 19, 2025, 7:00 PM, Pembroke Town Hall, Room 6, Veterans Hall, on the application of Nick Ivano, 468 Plain Street in Marshfield, requesting a special permit, excuse me, in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Pembroke, Section 43B3, change of use from storage to repair of motor vehicles and maintenance. Property is located at 110 Madison Street, Unit 1A in Pembroke, Business District A, shown on assessment map C8, Lot 128. Copy of the application available to Officer Planning, Board of Pembroke Town Hall. Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen.
I want you to introduce yourself and let us know what you're looking to do.
Good evening, my name is Nick Ivano. I work with Charlie Callahan over at 110 Madison Street. We have a bay that is attached to the front dealership that is, was used before, previously for storage for NAPA. We're trying to convert the garage back into automotive to do light engine repair and maintenance to vehicles, and that's pretty much about it.
Okay. Are these, are these your own vehicles, or just people coming in, like a retail, like someone coming in off the street, or?
Both, we don't, these, we're gonna be maintaining our vehicles for the car dealership. The mechanic is presently working full-time at Firehouse Gas Station in the center of town. I believe later on in the future, he might want to open his own thing, but as of right now, it's gonna be maintaining a lot of our vehicles.
Okay. It's just the one, is it just one bay?
Yes.
Okay. What would the hours be?
Whatever the ordinance is, I believe the ordinance right now is 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, if that's correct.
See what connects, Monday through Friday, you looking to do, or?
Monday through Saturday, Saturday probably 10:00 AM to, you know, 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Close Sunday.
Close Sunday.
Yep.
And what's in and out, you just, it's storing?
Yeah, yep, it's empty, those pictures that are there are from today.
Okay.
That I took. There's a car in there that we are storing, it's Charlie's car, and we have been doing, you know, maintenance on our vehicles, some of his customers' cars, like he has side jobs where he works at the gas station. So he has been bringing people on and off, but then when the building inspectors came in, told us that to come in and get that stuff, to get all the paperwork corrected, because there were some complaints and everything, we kind of slowed him down, and we were told that he can catch up with his previous work that was there, to try to get some stuff out of there.
Okay.
So that's what he's been doing.
What were the complaints?
There was a previous tenant there, his name was Giovanni, and he was taking up a lot of space there, work, having the guys work outside at nighttime, making noise, taking up too much space, but since then, that gentleman has left.
And your work would all be inside the bay?
Yeah, yep.
So are you really just working on, is it just one car at a time in there, or?
One or two cars at a time, there's not, we don't have a lot of space.
Right.
So we're lucky if we can get two cars in there.
You're right opposite Cabillions, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Chris, any questions, or?
No, they're limited the space, I mean, they can't even put a full lift in, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Use a creeper again.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Louis, anything?
How many customers do you usually seat per day?
Sometimes zero. You know, it all depends, you know, maybe one or two, hopefully, you know, we have to see how it goes.
Okay.
And like I said, we are trying to, I wanna keep it light, I don't wanna do heavy engine repairs or anything like that, or any kind of transmission work. There is two other facilities on the, on the same property that do maintenance and do automotive, you know, they can do heavy stuff, we don't want it.
So you're looking to do the same thing you were already doing, until some, until a former tenant complained?
Yes.
So it was just, just him was the only, only real person complaining about anything?
Uh, there was a couple of complaints, but from, whatever.
Contagious, I get it.
Yeah, yep, but just keeping up the, doing the same thing that we were doing previously.
Okay. I see some people, has anyone here in support, or can you just come up, just, just come up to the microphone and just identify us?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Say your address and name, and
Hi, I'm Susan Hanlon Doddlin, I'm an abutter, I've been a property owner for 21 years, and I'm here just to ask for courtesy and equal consideration for the abutters for the property at 110. I think when guardrails are in place, they're really, you know, issues are contained, and every, you know, people can do their work, and we as abutters, or me, I'll speak for myself, can have quiet enjoyment of the property, but when there are no guardrails in place, it's unlivable. So I'm just here, you know, you guys are gonna vote on, without being someone that lives there, but I'd just like to tell you what I think would be helpful.
Sure.
And what in the past was, that, some of the conditions of guardrails that were in place for the same units at the one, the end of the building with the 20-foot bay doors that were actually put in place by this, the ZBA, that seemed to work pretty well for quite a long time. So just equal consideration.
Do you have any pictures?
I do, I have pictures, and from today I even have, but before, I don't want any ill will with anybody, I just wanna be able to live in my home, you know, in a reasonable manner, people do their work with reasonable guardrails, and not have it just be a free-for-all, and a source of, it's just unlivable, and you couldn't even go to sell the house with some of the stuff that's gone on over the years. Now, not every day, but what I'd like to ask, and the things that are specific that worked in the past that the ZBA put in place, were things like, you know, no one's allowed to live in the building. I mean, you come and you do your work in business hours, reasonable business hours that general automotive places keep, and what was put in place with the fleet repair was, you know, something of like 8 to 5, but of course, things would come a little bit later, and people would pick up things, pick up vehicles, and, so there was, you know, a little bit of time when there's people coming and going, but not 6:00 in the morning, 3:45 in the morning, drop tow trucks coming in at 3:45, nothing like that. So for fleet repair, the same bays, the big bays, that worked well, so limiting the hours to normal business hours, and doing the work with the bay doors down. So today was a little bit of a fiasco with the doors up and equipment going all day. If you don't live there, you probably wouldn't appreciate it, you'd be like, yeah, right, you know, it's not a problem, but if there's three hours of constant banging and, I don't know what the equipment is called, the air guns and compressors, but it can go for several hours. So if the doors are down, it contains it, and that was in place for fleet repair in the same, the same end of the building. No work on weekends, and that worked well. I mean, we could live a life, we could go outside and not have, you know, this crazy loud noise, way over the decibel limit. So I have a few questions about the number of vehicles that will be, someone asked on the ZBA, like, how many do you anticipate? I have just a question, like, how many are gonna be sitting out there, going in and out, like, each day? You know, is it 30? There were, at one point, there were 30 vehicles out there. Is it gonna be 30, is it gonna be 10, 5? You know, some guardrails around that would be helpful. We're less than 300 feet from where this work is taking place, and with the removal of a bunch of trees off of the easements, the noise has really, it travels a lot easier. So it's just gotten worse. So what kinds of vehicles are they gonna be, Harleys, are they gonna be, you know, diesel pickups? Are these just regular sedans that they're reselling in the lot? I mean, it's just a question. There's been a lot of disruption with Harleys coming and going and sitting, not necessarily from these people, but that is a disruptive thing. I have nothing against people who have motorcycle, I mean, they can do what they want, but coming at 3:45 in the morning and backing out, moving them, working all night, these things are real, they really occur, really occurs, and it's really an issue, and again, with some constraints, it's not an issue. For the most part, I think people wanna do the right thing, and they wanna make a living, and I have no problem with that, I, again, have no ill will, I would just like to be able to live in a home where, you know, it's not vibrating, and there isn't work going on at 3:45 in the morning, and the doors are up, and the noise is so loud that there's no way to be outside. So if the doors are down, that's a big thing, that's very helpful, and that was a condition for fleet repair, same bays. That's basically it, there's some lights that don't have shields that are so bright that it looks like landing strip at Logan. I don't know, they were recently installed, I don't know if they're the owner of the building and they put them in, but maybe some shields would be helpful. They're so bright that it's almost, we thought they were on fire, because they, sometimes they get really bright before they die, but it was just a question, if it's possible to put shields up. We have blackout curtains up, we have, you know, solid blinds, we're doing our best to keep the light trespass, you know, from not being an issue.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a recent development, so I'm not sure if that's Mr. Ivano's, you know, responsibility, or if that's the building owner, if they're the same, one of the same, but if it could please just be some courtesy extended to, I guess I'm the only one here as an abutter, I'm not sure, but just some realization that, like, we're real for, as an abutter, I'm not sure, but, um, just some realization that, like, we're real people with lives, I mean, I have a twenty-two-year-old son who's going to graduate school, it's like, we can't be woken up multiple times a night with the bat cave door going up and some car, loud car coming out, I mean, nobody would believe it unless you actually saw it, so I do have pictures, I do have, um, you know, the sound and all, but I don't wanna get into that with people, because I don't wanna spend my life fighting with people over these kinds of issues, I would just like for people to do their business within normal constraints, what we all face, and not impact in an extremely negative way, you know, your neighbors, so, so that's it, thank you for the time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is anyone else here either for against, yeah, just same thing, just your name and, um, address, and just talking on the mic.
I'm an abutter as well, I live at one-fourteen Maticus Street.
Okay.
I've been there for eleven years, uh, my landlord can't be here tonight, Stephen Chisholm, he got a letter, but I'm the primary resident. Over the course of eleven years, um, there's been quite a bit going on, on that property, if you talk to the Pembroke Police, they'll let you know, they're well aware of what's going on, um, I'm not gonna blame that all on the people that are here now, Charlie's the old owner, we got a new owner here, seems like a fine gentleman, um, I have had words with Charlie over the years many times, I don't trust his judgment at all, Nick, I've had words with him, um, they've brought a lot of bad people around, you know, a lot of illegals and people that are just hanging around late at night, uh, people living in contracted bays, coming late at night, I've made multiple complaints to the police, um, they're on my side, you know, the police know what's going on, um, they know who's involved, um, but, you know, they're sorta, you know, they can only do so much, but as an abutter, like, my landlord, he's a good friend of mine, known since high school, I'm fifty, I grew up in Pembroke, and, uh, you know, property values, trying, trying to sell properties, um, I, I'm an ex-business owner, I ran a business for twenty-five years, I know what it's like to make a living, um, but the general respect issue, like, I've had problems with Nick in the past, where he's, you know, got a hair across his ass, forgive me for saying so, coming out the door with an air horn, you know what I mean, blowing air horns, his body's burning up and down the street, so he lacks respect, I don't trust Charlie's judgment at all, and I'll just leave it at that, hopefully, with the new owner here, things will get a little better, we'll have some cameras, um, I asked Charlie for the last eleven years to put up cameras, he never wanted to put up cameras, because he knew that it was a zoo, and it would come back in, so I get cameras, so every time something goes on in the neighborhood, the cops come to my house, and I have to go through footage and play the cop, and then I have enemies, you know what I mean, and I'm looking out for everybody, because everybody else is afraid to do anything, like, this woman, she says is one of them, make enemies, that's way far gone in my case, I've already made a ton of enemies, you know, so, that's all I got to say.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Does anyone else wanna? Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Hi, it's me too, uh, introduce myself, Lou Pagnani, uh, my wife and I bought the property at Maticus at one-ten, uh, April thirtieth, so, we have ties to Pembroke, I have family in Pembroke, uh, so we're still filling out the property, getting to learn the, uh, the tenants, all the existing tenants are still there, right now, we're keeping everything the same, just to get a feel for the property and, uh, you know, the business and all that stuff, so, um, we wanna be a good neighbor, work with the board, work with the, the, uh, abutters, and, uh, we're all here to have a good life, make money, and whatever I can do, I'm more than willing to do, um, so, if any questions, you can ask, same thing, I will extend my number to anybody or whatever, but whatever the board decides, you know, that's, you guys know more about the business than I do, you know what I mean, as far as what's going on, so, but I'm more than willing to help these guys and, um, Nick and the tenant, you know, everybody, I know these guys, just meeting them in the past couple of months, so, um, yeah, so whatever we can do to make this a good place, I want it to be an asset to the town, I don't want it to be a liability, I wanna keep it clean and nice and have it like a, a nice place to drive by, and, you know, it's a busy street, and I think it looks good now, it could look better, so, you know.
Can you, um, one of, one of the abutters mentioned the lighting, is there a way for you to, is the owner of the property to address the lighting?
Uh, I mean, absolutely, yeah, we can, I haven't really seen the place at night, honestly, so, um, that's something I can look at, and if we have to turn the lights or make adjustments, absolutely, so.
Okay.
But I can, um, I'll actually cruise by there tonight and see what, you know, what you're talking about, if we can.
Okay.
Move the lights or make adjustments, I don't know, you know?
Okay. Okay, um.
But for the property, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, there's a Cabillion next door, a bunch of bays, uh, different businesses in there, so, it's tough, just, I mean, just, to get everybody to work together, I guess, you know, there's so many different kinds of people there, so, um, however we can manage this, I guess, to make it work for everyone.
Okay, I mean, but for us, it's just the one bay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's more than that, you know?
Right, and I understand the property as a whole, so, I mean, the lighting would obviously go to probably the entire project, property versus just, um, it may not even be those bays lights that are bothering.
Yeah, I know, there, no, there's some big lights up there, I don't know exactly where they're pointing, but, you know, there's some big halogen lights up there.
Right, okay. We get, you gotta talk into the mic otherwise, so.
Yeah, the, uh, they're, uh, those lights are national grid, but, you know, it's a, it's a lighting.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect you guys to have to deal with.
Yeah, those two lighting that she's talking about are the back, the rear parking lot of the bays, there's one on each pole, they're both run by the power company, so, we, Lou would have to call up to the power company to see if you can talk to them about it, but we have no control over that at all.
Okay, um.
Yeah, that's something, I mean, definitely look at, you know?
Okay, hang on.
That's an easy thing.
Okay, and the hours, is there any issue just measuring Cabillians' hours?
Uh, I mean, I would, I don't know, make it, I mean, it's up to you guys as far as.
No, we can put conditions on it.
I'd rather have it fair for everyone.
Is it mixed use, I know he's, I know you're here for us for one thing, but, but everybody else there is.
There's an insurance guy there, a door guy, there's a cabinet restore guy, there's fleet repair, there's K-5, there's, you know, uh, there's the budget rent-a-truck.
Right.
There's, uh, the auto parts.
Yep.
So, there's a, there's different stuff going on, but.
Yeah, I mean, from your, for your bay, you know, it's, it's, it's an allowed used by special permit, so it's certainly.
Yeah, so whatever, I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm just here to introduce myself.
No, I appreciate it, yeah, and, and, yeah, we may have some more questions, um.
Absolutely, so.
But yeah, it is, it is a.
I'm all for whatever you guys think, and then.
Okay.
You know, take it from there, you know?
All right, um, does anyone else wanna say anything while they're, oh, yeah, just come up to the microphone and just your, just your name and address.
Lauren Vasliatis, I'm the owner of Fleet Repairs, one-ten Maticus, uh, we no longer do diesel trucks, we've changed, um, we basically have a contract with the US Post Office, we do post office vehicles, contract vehicles, we don't take in cars from off the street. My issue is, they have a ten-car license up there, today there's twenty-three, there's always way more, there's no parking, um, right now, they park budget trucks, some of the budget trucks don't fit in the spot, so they hang out into the driveway, along with that, there are three cars deep from their bay repairing cars, cars that sit there for days up on jacks, no wheels, no one can move them, there's no one there to move the budget truck, last month, they lost two tow trucks coming in with post office vehicles, they couldn't get in the driveway, we do some light camper repairs, repair leaks and things, they come and go, a lot of our customers can't swing into the lot because of the amount of cars parked along the side, um, up against the sidewalk, and in front of the building, I mean, in front of the, you know, front, so when you go to swing in, there's no room. On top of the twenty-three cars that are there today, um, they have a big truck that blocks, blocks a bay, I've been called in the middle of the night, fire alarm's been set off from exhaust inside, fire alarm was set off for the whole building from them painting a car inside, um, we've had, the people he talks about that work at the other place and work for him after, they don't come to work till five-thirty, six o'clock at night, we have a surveillance camera now that K-5 put up, um, because we were getting complaints, thinking we were doing work, it's cars coming and going till eleven o'clock midnight, they have car, kids riding their bikes in the parking lot at night, climbing on the cars, under the cars, on top of the vehicles, the last owner put Charlie as the manager, if I called with a complaint, complained to Charlie, I'd say, hey, Charlie, this is going on, nothing I can do, they don't listen to me. I'm losing business, there's too many cars, when you contact Town Hall, they say, yeah, they have ten-car permit, sometimes twelve, thirteen, fifteen cars is okay, there's twenty-three, they move them across the street when they're told to move them, within two days, it's all back, they're supposed to have three budget trucks, there's eight or nine there, today there's two, because they cleaned up today for the meeting. I mean, if we all have to make money, none of us can get vehicles in and out of the driveway, they're fixing cars outside, ninety percent of them are being fixed outside, I've, Town Hall has tons and tons of pictures and video, you know, you come to go in the parking lot and they're laying on the ground under a car, someone's gonna run their legs over, it's, I was told by Pete at Town Hall, it's a storage unit, it's a storage unit, it's not a bay for auto repair. I wouldn't mind, but it, it cleans up for a couple of days, then it gets worse, cleans up for a couple of days, then it gets worse, Nick is, this isn't the first time he's been at this location, it's the second, he was thrown out the first time because of the same issues.
That's not true.
Okay.
That is absolutely not true, Lauren.
And this is, um, so for this unit they're talking about, this is going on like in front of that unit?
Mm-hmm.
This bay, okay, so it's all coming out of that bay?
Yep, they're there till ten, eleven o'clock at night, maybe he's not there, but whoever he has working for him, because they get out of work at five, five-thirty here, and they move on up the street till late, late at night.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Get it more to the mic.
Yep, you can.
I absolutely agree with her, there was twenty-five, thirty, forty cars at a time there, uh, both George and Peter know about the issue, that was with the previous guy, Giovanni, Giovanni Pervetta, he has moved out, he went to Quincy. Lauren and I don't deal with each other, we don't like each other, so she's putting all that on me, I just took back over, I was there previously back in two thousand and one, the new owner and I did not see eye to eye, and I left, Charlie was the previous owner, when Charlie sold the bu, the building, the new owner and I did not see eye to eye, so we, I left, I was asked to come back, since I've come back, you can ask George and Peter, all those cars are gone, though driveway, what they, what he said, there's no, nobody to block it, there's nobody that is, that is, it's all cleaned up, that was the previous tenant. The mechanic that is, we have working there, like I said, he's working at Firehouse Gas Station, he works there till five o'clock, after five o'clock, he comes there to the, to the bay, and he starts working on some of his cars that he had there from previous, they said he can work there temporarily to get those cars out of there, to give them back to his customers. Does he stay later? Possibly, because I'm not there, but we're putting up cameras now, we're going to try to control the situation. Motorcycles, Shepherds was next door before Cabillians, Shepherd's son had a motorcycle shop in that parking lot, was working on motorcycles, they would burn rubber in the parking lot, not us, I don't ride a motorcycle, I don't sell motorcycles, I don't work on them, not me. Was there little kids in the summertime riding their bikes around in the parking lot? Yes, there was, it was on a Saturday, there was nobody in the parking lot, they brought their kids over, they ride their bikes, I didn't see any harm of it, if there is a harm, we'll stop it, it's not a problem, they haven't done it since, they're just two little kids, you know, I honestly think they're picking on the mechanic because he's Brazilian, they don't like him, uh, but I don't think it's fair, they haven't gave the guy a chance, he's helped Lauren's husband work in his shop, work on some post office trucks that Steve needed some help at fleet repair, so her husband came over to this kid and said, hey, can you help me do a couple of my post office trucks, and I'll pay you for the job, I witnessed it, so he was okay to help work on the post office vehicles, but now, all this other stuff, it's nonsense, all we're trying to do is maintenance our vehicles, close at six o'clock, seven o'clock, whatever the town ordinance is for that location, we'll abide by it, and go on, make a couple of bucks, live our life, and not argue, there's no reason, Brian and I never had a cross word, have we, Brian, never, we're actually friends, I, you know, I don't, we never had a problem, we've all worked with each other at this location, when Giovanni was there, it all blew out of proportion, that guy is gone, not coming back.
Okay.
And that's it, gentlemen, and you know, all I'm asking is for, a simple thing, let us maintenance our vehicles.
Is that garage, is that garage set up to maintenance, like it's got oil catches and everything you need for running a auto shop in there?
None of the garages do.
Well, I'm not worried about the other ones, I'm talking about the one you're in here for.
No, no, absolutely, no, it doesn't.
Shut it?
Maybe, I think it should if we were doing oil changes and all that kinda stuff, yes, as of right now, what he's doing is, what, like the other garages are doing, they anthem and they put them into an oil drum, and I dispose of the oil drums at, uh, Firehouse Gas Station, because he has a, a heater that burns oil, waste oil, so we bring the drum stand.
Okay, okay. Chris, you guys got anything? Oh, yeah, come on up, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I was glad you brought up your oil thing.
Just, um, just your name and address.
My name's, um, Brian Kaneman, and I'm the owner of K-5 Automotive, I've been in, um, it's one-ten.
Where is that, is that?
It's, um, yeah.
In that bay, one of those bays?
I've been there since two thousand and seven, so basically, I'm one of the second with Lauren had said, and a lot of the problem is, is, um, there's no respect for authority when it comes to Nick or Charlie, I've been there for, since oh-seven, I've seen a lot of stuff there, but basically, the ten-car license, it just gets so overwhelmed, everything would be okay for a little bit, and then literally, there's like budget trucks and they're just, like, everything will be fine, and they'll just put these used cars everywhere, and it just makes the place like, it just looks like crap, so basically, my customers, um, they drop their cars off at night a lot, and a few of them are afraid to put their keys in the lockbox, because there's all kinds of shenanigans, they're having cookouts and, you know, nine o'clock at night, and it's just a, it's not a good place to have a business right now, and, you know, like I said, I got a family, I got a, you know, my wife's here, I got a son, I'm just trying to do the right thing, I'm not about people making money, um, Lou, the new owner, he's a great guy, and, um, you know, I really respect, like, he's got some good plans for the place, hooking up cameras, I had to set up two cameras myself, this is just to catch everything that's going on, um, the police have been down there, they know the place, they, they handle Shady Acre Lane, they call it on the, the two-way, they, they know about it, and it, it's just, it's, I don't know, it's nothing changes if nothing changes, and, you know, like, I think that's just a bad idea for, um, what's happening in one-ten Maticus, and that's short and sweet, that's all I got, really.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Is anyone else?
Yeah, I have filed, Susan again. I just think that this is an untenable, unlivable situation, um, just please, balance the need to have business in town with the people who actually live here and pay, you know, as much taxes, I mean, the, if you could please, if you're going to allow this, and I don't know what you're gonna do, but if you are, can you please just ask them to just apply the same rules we had before with the doors down, not on the weekends, Cabillion isn't there on the weekends, and it's, it's actually very respectful, I mean, they come, they do their work, there are some things that go on, but every, no one's perfect, but it's just not livable with, with the chaos, I didn't wanna be that blunt and be that person that everybody doesn't like, and, you know, doesn't like what she says, but I don't think there's wrong, is there anything wrong with saying what the truth is, and what the experience is, and, um, if it can be managed, and if there's someone responsible, please tell me who it is, like, you guys aren't responsible for, you know, getting a shield on those lights, which are like so bright, you're think you're, you think you're on a landing strip, I mean, so nobody takes responsibility for it, but there has to be a way to manage that, so that's one small example, but the noise level, you know, you can't start work at five o'clock when people are coming home to sit down with their family for dinner, and then have someone working from five to eleven, or twelve, I mean, I have all this evidence, but it's, you guys don't want it, you don't enforce the zoning.
No, so a lot of.
So who does?
A lot of what you're, in any business, if someone's violating the bylaw, you know, that's an enforcement issue for the building department, we can't.
Correct.
So, whether he got the variant, or, excuse me, the special. So, whether he got the variant, or, excuse me, the special permit or not, he's been parking whatever, you know, the, the prior person was parking thirty cars there, right?
Right.
And if that's a violation of whatever permit they have, that's a violation.
And the hours too, and all of it, the doors up, the doors should be done.
No, no, I, I know what you're saying, so, all of that.
So, who's the person that goes and says, you know, "You're violating this"? Is there a town person?
It's the building department.
The building department, the bill, the building inspector, the same guy that comes up and inspects your deck is the same guy that comes up.
But he says, "This is a civil matter, go away."
Well.
It's not, it's an enforcement matter. So, who, who enforces when there are violations? That's just the question. Who is the person?
Well, the building department's the enforcement agency.
Okay, so there is a person here.
For that, for those, for zoning or land use matters.
All right.
It's not, if it's a criminal matter, it's the police.
Well, of course, but, but when the person who's supposed to be enforcing says, "Oh, this, that's a civil matter if you think it's too loud," but it doesn't comply with what the rules were, like with, um, Fleet Repair, they had to have the doors down.
Well, right now, they don't.
And they do.
Right now, they don't have any permission to do any auto repair in there at all.
Okay, all right, so.
So, they shouldn't be doing anything in there for auto repair. At this point, they should only be storing things in there.
Right, okay, so.
So, again, that's, the, the police or the building department would be saying, if there's a nuisance issue, but you're experiencing nuisance because of loud smells or odors or noises.
Well, just twenty-four, seven, I mean.
I know, let me finish, I'm, I'm, I'm working with you here. Um, then that could be a civil matter between two abutting owners, if it's some sort of nuisance, and I'd tell you to get an attorney if that was the case. If it's someone violating the bylaw, say, their building, their hours of operation are limited to five PM.
Yeah.
And they're going past five PM?
Yeah, like all.
Then that's, that's an enforcement issue.
Right.
Because they're violating the bylaw. Um, so, that's maybe where they're, when they're saying that to you, what they mean. Um, so.
It's, there's gotta be somebody accountable. So, if you vote to allow this and then all of this chaos continues.
Did the violation of their special permit and it could be taken away.
Yeah, but the person who's supposed to enforce it would says, "Go away, this, go get a lawyer," you know, I mean, so, I think it's just a conflict. But anyway, thank you, I just hope there are guardrails so that there are limits.
No, I appreciate.
The weekend, we can't live, we need to have some downtime. This is, this is, makes someone's life, I'm paying for twenty-five years in a place I can't live in. We can't sleep, we wake up in anticipation of the dumpsters, we wake up in anticipation of the door going up and the car going out.
Right.
So, it, it, it's just unlivable, but anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Can I just say, I just wanted to give you back off what you.
Yeah, yeah, just, just your name and where you live, or where, or your, the business address.
Kristal Joseph, and, um, Brian's wife at K-5. Nick said all those cars were previous owners and cleaned up, and they're not, this is, this is from today, this morning, I took them, and I just wanna leave it at that.
Was that on the one-ten or across the street?
It's on one-ten, it's on, it's in front of his and Charlie's bay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Do you guys have any?
General question, um, Lou, you can answer from there, just real loud. What, how lo, how, what does the lease look like? What does a gentleman's lease look like?
Tenant at Will's.
Tenant at Will's?
All of them.
Okay. I'm just thinking new landlord, giving everybody the benefit of the doubt, and, you know, doing the right thing, you do the right thing. If you're not doing the right thing, you go. I'm not, that, that.
Yeah, no, that's basically it, that's where I'm at right now.
I'm just trying to understand, yeah.
You know, so, I, I don't know anybody from anybody, you know, so, anyone from anyone, whatever it is, but.
No, I, I didn't know if he was like ten years, five years, three years, ten years.
No, uh, I just wanna get a feel for the place and get to meet everybody, and I told everybody, we're just keeping everything the same until, you know, I can figure out what I'm gonna do there.
Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then.
I'm sure you don't wanna pigpen, you know what I mean?
Absolutely not, no. No, but I'd like to, I'd like to.
I'm not saying complaints of pigpen by any means, I'm just saying.
But eventually, I'd like to have long-term leases in there with good tenants, you know, so.
Okay, um, so, one, I mean, personally, does anyone else have anything they wanna say? Yeah.
My property is Buster Parkin Lot, and they have been working on cars right next, like, not even in the bay. Like, he works on cars right next to my house. There's a row of hedges, they die back in the winter, it's totally over.
Where are you just on picture, if I'm looking at?
If you're looking straight on, I'm the house right to the right, right across from the Emerald Hospital. I, directly above them, my, my backyard abuts the buildings.
I got you.
Uh, maybe the owner considered maybe putting a fence up there, um, just to stop some of the noise and maybe people creeping in my yard, 'cause I have had, um, home invasions where people came, where, you know, they, the cops brought the dogs over, 'cause people come around the parking lot, out the, around the back. So, there's just, there's a bad element that's coming around late at night. During the day, things are pretty calm, but like I said, he goes home, whoever he's, he has working for him, it's not a race issue, I resent that. It's not a race issue. This has to do with bringing bad elements around that don't have to live there, that don't care about the people that live there, okay? And they're his buddies, and, you know, they all talk and they make it hard, they've been trying to get me out of there for a long time. We don't get along.
What's your address?
Uh, one-fourteen Matice Street.
Okay.
So, I've had a lot of problems with, with these two individuals in particular. Um, he never put up a fence, he never put up cameras, yes me to death, and, you know, when he gets off the phone, me, F that guy. That, that's this guy's attitude and this guy's attitude. So, that's my honest opinion, and that's the truth. These guys don't care about anyone.
All right, um, okay, does anyone else have anything? No, okay. Um, just two things, do you guys have any interest in going over there or no? I mean, I've been by it, I know it. I don't know if you guys.
I haven't taken, I've been by it, I've been to that.
I've, I've been by it a plenty of times, and I know the, the state law.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know if that's a proper term, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, my, my problem with it, there's all these, one, it was operating as it shouldn't have been, right? There wasn't a permanent place. Um, clearly, there's major issues going on there. Um, and then, you know, the abutters obviously have some big concerns.
Yeah, no, I agree, I mean, it just, it's not a.
I mean, we could put, if, if it were to be allowed, we could condition it, um, and it'd be, it'd be limited to those conditions, the hours. I mean, I would, I would say it's Monday to Friday, eight to five.
What does a violation look like?
Closed and, on the weekends.
What does a violation look like for revocation of special permit? Is it like one, two, three?
I don't think it goes to the building department, I mean, it's, it has to go to the building department, but if they're violating.
No, I didn't know if you knew it offhand.
They're violating the conditions, uh, but, you know, I don't, I'd like to take, if, would you be willing to meet me over there and just take a look at the property?
Absolutely.
Okay, um.
All right, can we go together or we gotta go separate?
We gotta go separate.
I hate that.
Um, so, to the applicant, I, I wanna go over there and take a, I mean, I, it's, it's funny, you drive by things and you see them a million times, but you just don't really look at them as much as you guys do, 'cause you're living in it and you're around it. So, I'd like to go, if you, if I could meet you as the owner.
Sure.
Over there, um, I'd like to do that. I don't know if you guys feel, if you'd rather vote, it's, if you guys would rather.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't blame you. I wouldn't, I, I mean, I've driven by it a million times, but I mean, she's talking about guardrails, and I'm like, what do you mean by a guardrail? I know what a guardrail looks like on the highway, but I'm.
I think she meant like conditions.
Oh, 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 yeah. Either way.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you guys come up with, I'll, I'll do the.
Well, I'd like to take a look at it, um.
You do the five o'clock tour, I'll do the five-fifteen tour.
But I'll put to the applicant, are you okay with me or any of the board members coming by?
Absolutely.
And so, well, if the board's okay with it, we can continue the hearing, just to give, uh, opportunity for me, and then if you gentlemen wanna go as well.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to see it, and then I'll probably see it at, at night, when it's, you know, when, uh, you can get a sense what it looks like.
Yeah, right now, right now.
I think, okay, I think, you know, you came in with a legitimate application, I mean, I think there is grounds to grant the special permit, because it isn't allowed use by special permit, and there's obviously mechanical work done in that, um, that neighborhood, obviously, right? I mean, that whole place is mechanic days, so, but that doesn't mean you can do whatever you want there.
Of course.
You know, to the detriment of the neighbors and everyone else in the town. Um, so, I got some big concerns with that, um, 'cause I don't look too far from there either, and, you know, hearing that stuff isn't that close to where my, I live, my kids are, I don't, I don't appreciate it. Um, but I'd like to take a ride over just to do my due diligence and, and give you an opportunity to, you know, you do have the right to apply and, um, and you are, you know, saying you're cleaning it up, so, um, you guys okay with that? When's our next meeting?
June sixteenth.
Are we getting any deadlines with the filing for a decision?
I believe it's sixty-five days.
So.
I think we're okay.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, what I'll do, does she have your info?
No.
Okay, can, can you give her your info? Um, I'll communicate through you as the owner, and then you can get in touch with the applicant, and then we can, maybe, I can make a, a run. I don't look far from there.
I was just curious, are they allowed to do business in there until your final judgment?
Uh, that's up to the building department. I can't, I can't enforce.
I, I, I think whatever the building department has said in regards to, you know, finish working on what you've got means, like, get rid of this crap, take, not crap, but get rid of all this, all this stuff, so the people that gave them to you aren't being, you know, can't get to work, can't take their kids to school, all that stuff, but I'd say, like, no new vehicles. I mean, per what the building department will uphold.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not gonna come by with binoculars and check it out.
We can, we're, you know, we sort of, we interpret the rules, and then the building department would be almost like the police arm, if you wanna think, like, they, they enforce them, like, they would be the ones that said, they would shut you down to a cease and assist. We don't have that authority.
Yeah.
I mean, all we would do is either allow or not allow this permit, or if it's allowed, allow with conditions.
But as of right now, there's no permit there, like.
As far, I mean, that's what everyone's telling me, I, I don't know.
All right, that's all I know.
Yeah.
As it seems, there was no one. Right, so.
There's certainly not a special permit.
So, it's illegal business right now, if anyone's doing business, technically.
They don't, they don't have a special permit to operate a.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, mechanic shop. Um, okay, I will, is everyone okay with that?
You can continue.
The applicant, okay, the owner, okay. Um, so, what we're gonna do, I think, we're gonna can, we'll put it to a vote, we're gonna continue this to, what did I say?
June sixteenth.
June sixteenth, so, just keep that in mind if you wanna come back to the next hearing, so it'll be June sixteen, seven PM here. It might be the second meeting, I'm not sure, will, will that be the first meeting?
It'll be the first.
So, it'll be the first meeting, so it should start at seven. Um, okay, and I'm gonna, I'll get in touch with the owner and, and take a ride over there. Um, okay, uh, so we'll get a motion to continue, I'm sorry, so what did you say, June what?
Sixteenth.
It's been a long, been a long day.
After eight o'clock, it's all gone.
And we're applying as far as the timeframe for, um.
For issuing a decision, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to continue this matter to June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven PM in this room?
Yes.
In the Town Hall, this room. Um, get a second?
Second.
All's in favor? All right, all right, guys, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Are we gonna do a housekeeping?
Um, do we have minutes to approve? There were, right? Do you guys have them handy, or, oh, you know, I think they're in the back of the plane stream. All right. All right, we'll be, we'll just, we, I think we can just group these together. All right, we'll do, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the meeting minutes from April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Get a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Any, any other business?
No.
All right, I think that meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.